All right, we're going to call to order the January 13th Selectmen's Meeting. Meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on Berlin Cable and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. We have minutes to approve, January 6th and January 7th.
Seconded.
Any comments, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. General public, oh no, correspondence. I don't think we had any. General public comment. Oh, boy. And it's a little after 7:05, we have Police Chief Tom Galvin here to give...
We'll start with monthly report at first on the list?
Yes.
I think so.
Sorry, I didn't realize it this afternoon, so I have to...
I've got it.
Have to make...
Thank you.
All right. So fortunately, December was a relatively quiet month. We were down eight, just over 800 calls. We'd been up over 930 the month before, so it was kind of nice. This time of year can go either way. You know, it's a nice time of year where we spend a lot of time with our families, and that doesn't always go well. This year in town, it went pretty well. It was very good. You know, 802 calls, we only had four that resulted in criminal charges so far. We do have a bunch of follow-up investigations that are going on. Unfortunately, because of the time of year and the number of retail establishments we have, we end up with some increase in our shoplifting and thefts. This month, we had one store in particular that we've talked about several times in the past, and it's, we get that reaction from a lot of people, but the reason it happens is they're the only ones that report stuff most of the time. Most of the other stores aren't being victimized as much as they are, but they're not as proactive in reporting it. So actually, at Alta, we had about a $2,000, just over $2,000 theft. And this has kind of morphed into a much bigger case. The detective Trangone is working, the individual has been identified, and actually, the end of this week, he's going to be traveling to Everett with a group of detectives that range from, I don't even have the complete list, but I think there's nine or 10 Alta stores, including as far out as Westwood, a couple in New Hampshire, and they're going to do one collective interview of this individual, who's already admitted and kind of listed the stores that he's hit. And so we'll have some criminal charges that result from that. We also had a, I'd say a purse snatching, but we had a purse stolen from TJ Maxx that resulted in some credit card fraud attempts after that. We've got some pretty good pictures, but have yet to identify the individual in that. Unfortunately, this month, motor vehicle crashes continue, you know, to increase. It becomes a question of weather a lot of times, obviously, this type of year, so you know, we had kind of our first three major weather events. We ended up with 26 crashes this month, only seven with injuries, so it was a lot of cars kind of sliding off the road, minor damage. So not too, too bad, but we did have another, I guess, major event on Route 495 South. This time, it didn't happen in Berlin, it happened south of 290 before the morning commute. So there was a day during the month, and you may have noticed it. It was shorter duration, but more volume, because not only did it affect the 495 traffic and getting off onto Route 62, it also affected all the traffic on 290, so they were coming off and coming through South Berlin. So we kind of saw it a lot more in both directions. But we managed it, kind of managed it the same way we did the last one. We had a robbery this month at the mobile station, December 8th in the early morning. Someone went into the store. Fortunately, they did not show a weapon, they were able to get away with about $300 in cash. We did a short K-9 track, and it was, it seemed like it was pretty well planned, the person parked very close, it was only about a 40 or 50 yard track, and to wear a car, so he had to park. Still investigating, Detective Trangone's had a lot of canvassing of other area businesses that have video. He seems to have a timeline of a car traveling away from town, so he's still trying to track some video down a little bit further away to hopefully help in making an identification.
You were on the, Berlin Police was on the news tonight.
Tonight, we were on the news? For, for, for Verc again?
Yes. Yeah.
Yep. So that was an interesting one, we'll get to talk about that next month, but we had a break-in at Verc, they cut a hole in the roof, didn't steal anything, just a very, kind of an interesting, another interesting case there. You know, that's kind of our, I guess, our high-profile place right now.
I guess so.
So we'll have to see. Let's see, where else have we gone this month?
Please tell me about the loose cow.
I believe it had to do with Mr. Anza.
Really? Oh.
It was up off of Whitney.
Oh, no.
But it was caught, and they were returned. That's actually happened quite a few times from there, that the cows have gotten loose, and obviously, we saw what happened, the other things that Walter posted, and what's going on there.
I noticed the cows on the left side of the road, so as you're going up Whitney, they seem to be gone, the ones by the aqueduct.
Yeah, I haven't, yeah, I have not seen those as much, but the other animals that are up there, they just kind of roam free on the whole property, so it's time that they do get out. So we did officially lose Officer McCray on the 22nd, so he is now, I'm sure, enjoying the Mass State Police Academy. They've washed out some 40-plus already from their class, and it's, as I'll tell you, actually, Officer Welch's brother is a member of the Mass State Police, is working up at the academy now, so he has a luxury keeping track of the recruits at night, and had 10 or 11 try and kind of sneak out one night and walk out, but had to send them back to bed and said, "You can talk to people and leave in the morning." And then this month, I want to, just to you, I want to recognize one of our officers. Five years ago, Officer Kevin Colme came to me and wanted to create a drop-off location here for Toys for Tots, and also do a Fill the Cruiser event. The first year, things actually really took off right away, he was able to partner with Cabela's, but also with Five Below, so we had, we did an actual Fill the Cruiser event at Cabela's, but we had boxes at Five Below. And he's continued this for five years, it's morphed. We no longer partner with Toys for Tots, we actually partner with the Child Life Services at Children's Hospital, and we now know directly kind of where these toys are going, we drop them off directly at Children's Hospital. And, you know, this year, through all his efforts, we were actually able to drop off over 2,000 toys.
Wow.
And what they do at Children's Hospitals, for the kids that are spending the holidays in the hospital, they set up a makeshift store for the parents and for the families, and they go shopping, not shopping, they're able to just pick toys and give them to the kids that are in the hospital.
Oh.
So it's really, it's a great program. You know, obviously, there's a personal connection for our department with Children's Hospital because of Sharon and her daughter having spent quite a bit of time at Children's Hospital. So it's really nice, and I'm really just proud of the way he's been able to take that and continue it around with the five years and the success that it's been. So that's it for December. You know, obviously, we'll be able to talk more about the break-in, and overtime continues. That's kind of what our next step tonight is, is filling a vacancy, and some things we need to do to get that done quickly, and to try and kind of bring that overtime under control. We've done pretty good, you know, with some things that I don't love doing, and one-man shifts, and a couple of times, I've actually gone out there and I've been the second officer on the day shift, so some things to minimize that overtime, but hopefully through staffing. And, you know, unfortunately, we're not alone in the staffing issues, there's been some stories in the news, but there is just not an abundance of qualified police officer candidates out there anymore. If there are, they're just not applying for the jobs. And there's a combination of reasons for that, and, you know, everyone has their own reason why they're not applying anymore, but we've historically been able to find people that are academy-trained. That pool has virtually dried up. The Training Council changed some of the ways that they had been offering training for the last several years, and actually, it closed our academy in Boylston, saying that the numbers were down, and the numbers were down a little bit, so we weren't able to actually have self-sponsors that were non-employed people going and getting the training. So now that pool goes away. So what we've created is kind of an atmosphere where we're stealing from each other. And, you know, unfortunately, some chiefs are less respectful than others. I've talked to a couple of chiefs in the last couple of weeks who had officers that just walked in, here's a letter, I'm giving you two weeks' notice, they never got a phone call from a fellow chief to say, "Hey, listen, we're hiring, I'm sorry, but we're looking to take in one of your officers." You know, when we had it happen recently with one of our officers, the chief, a couple times away, said, "Hey, listen, you know, I want to hire him, how can we make it work? If you want me to wait six months, I'll wait six months. If you want me to wait two months, or if I can do it, just, you know, we'll work it out until it works for you, it works for me, it works for him." If we can do that, it makes it a lot easier on all the towns, but unfortunately, not all the chiefs are willing to operate that way.
So I have a question?
Yes.
First of all, I, well, two questions. Would you be able to send us the Animal Control Officer reports?
Yeah, I was actually gonna, I actually had a phone call with Helen today, we're gonna have, there's some things that went on the last couple of days, that we're gonna have a more extensive meeting later in the week, and we're kind of tweaking the way she does reports, and this was kind of a good call, and she's really got to make sure, she kind of crosses her t's and dots the i's, so I'm going to help her through that, and I will, if it's not that report, it'll be some other examples from her on what's been going on. So we actually had that discussion today, and I want to make sure, especially with this case, as it evolves, that she's really got a handle on it, a handle on the reporting.
And the other thing was the Bolton's request to exclude the truck traffic.
Yes, yep. So in terms of that, I had talked to Don Lo about that a few months ago, and it will definitely increase our truck traffic flow on Route 62, but what I think it can also do is decrease the flow on some of our side roads, because when they come down water aquatic, or they're trying to avoid other things, you know, we see trucks now on Highland Street, we see trucks on Lancaster Road. So all these roads that feed into water aquatic, we can hopefully eliminate some of that truck traffic, so it's kind of a balancing act. You know, we'll take Route 62, that's a road that's better designed to handle that traffic, and yes, we're going to have to deal with some more of their truck traffic as it goes to Clinton, and we're not going to get all of it, some of it's going to continue up and go 110 and go in that way, depending on where their deliveries or where their pickups are. Some will come this way and come get off of Route 62, but my hope is that it'll then alleviate some of our issues that are not really issues yet, but they're going to become issues, as we see it's becoming an issue in Bolton. You know, I think the discussions I've had preliminary with Dave Smith is we're going to have to work on some additional signage, and I hope that's something, and we talked about that, maybe Bolton can help us with, especially at Five Corners, I mean, there's a truck route, a truck route sign at Five Corners, but I think some better signage leading up to it, and maybe some signage throughout the center of town that they could help us with to, so that we don't run into too many problems with it. But Route 62 is really the type of road that trucks should be on. You know, and as we move forward, I think we evaluate what our truck traffic is, and maybe that's the direction we start to take in some of our other roads, and if we need to put exclusions in place.
I don't know what the date is, do we have a date for the discussion for...
Yeah, I told Dawn that it would either be the 21st or the 27th.
Okay, and hopefully, if you're available, you can come.
Yep. The other thing, we had this weekend, were some traffic and parking issues around the Flat Penny, so we had some issues Friday night, officers had to have some cars moved. Margaret and I actually talked over the weekend, we took some proactive action on Saturday, posting some temporary no parking signs, and that alleviated the issue. So I know Margaret's already asked Dave, and I made a call to Dave, he was out of the office today. We're going to talk tomorrow about some permanent installation of some signs and some parking enforcement as we move forward on Randall Road.
So will you be policing that area more?
Yep, I mean, it was, the initial problem this weekend was found by one of the officers on patrol, so I wouldn't say we're necessarily going to police it more, but we'll make sure we keep an eye on it, especially in those peak times at dinnertime and things like that, when, you know, when their parking lot may be overwhelmed.
They're pretty routinely down there.
I mean, that area, that area's not an area that...
Five corners, you're there all the time.
Yeah. Well, you know, they were there quite a bit on Saturday. Sergeant Chardner had discussions with the employees during the day Saturday when we set up the signs, and they were very responsive on Friday when we needed things moved. Sometimes it's just how things are presented, and they knew that cars would be towed pretty quickly if they, if they weren't moved, and so hopefully, that's some further discussion we can have, and I don't know what Dave has available for signs, but maybe we can work with them on funding to purchase signs if it becomes necessary. So we'll see where we go with that.
If you can't do signs, can you do barriers?
Like what style? In terms of like, just at the edge of the road, or...
Yeah, just to block it so they can't park there?
Possibly. I don't know what would work that we, you know, because that's something, might be something we'd have to constantly move in and out.
Yep.
But maybe it's something we could work, that they were responsible for moving in and out during peak times, if we were able to nail down those timeframes.
Okay.
Because it's kind of a balancing act, because we don't want to affect the people that live there on a Saturday afternoon if they're going to have a cookout.
Correct.
You know, it's finding that, that balancing, to make sure that we, if there's an area where we want to eliminate parking or restrict parking, that we do it in a way that we work with the neighbors, that it doesn't affect the neighbors every time.
Do you think maybe that one of the options might be to find an additional parking area for the Flat Penny?
That was a discussion I actually had with somebody else today, and they, they had mentioned another individual that has some possibly available space that may be willing to work with them, and maybe if they had a valley service or something like that, that could alleviate some of the issues.
Yeah.
And it's new.
Yeah.
You know, we, you know, we see that with lots of businesses when they're new. People flock, and then it regulates, and then there's kind of a steady flow, so we're at the beginning, we don't know necessarily what that steady flow is going to be once they're kind of in that normal operation.
Okay.
We'll go from there.
All right, you have an appointment then?
We have an appointment, yeah. Tommy, why don't you come on up and grab a chair for you? Get the hot seat in the middle. So as I, this is Tommy Welch, so...
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
A part-time officer with us here since 2012, so he's not a new face to us, but as I said earlier, hiring has become very difficult. And when you talk about hiring, retention is also part of that. We don't want to, I don't want to constantly be here like a revolving door, it's not good for any of us. So when we find someone that knows where they are, you know, knows what we are about, it really makes things a lot easier. And so we started our hiring process, and at the time, we thought we were going to fill two vacancies, so it really kind of, I'll tell you, I was kind of panicked. And, you know, because that's 20% of our full-time force, that's a lot for us, you know, for a larger agency, it's easy to absorb. We've talked about overtime every single month, it wasn't going to be easy for us to absorb. So we looked at the available candidate pool of people that were already trained, and it's really, it's just not there. So then we, you know, obviously, if we can promote from within, that's a win. You know, we get someone that the community knows, someone that knows the community. So we put it out to our part-time officers, and two applied, and unfortunately, they both need to attend the police academy. So there are new standards for the police academy in terms of physical fitness in order to be enrolled. So the way we began our process was that physical fitness test. So one of the candidates, just a couple of days before the test, decided to withdraw his name, and he will try again down the road. So we did a combined physical fitness test with Town of Northborough, so Tom was there, and then Northborough had, I believe, six candidates, they were filling a couple of vacancies, and they had just taken applications from all over. And so, proud to say, only one person beat him in the physical fitness test, and not by much. So, you know, it was, and as I said, it was someone that was a little bit younger, a little bit less life experience. But Tommy brings kind of a lot of experience to us, so he's currently a full-time firefighter in the city of Worcester. So this is kind of a, really, a win for policing. Yeah, we always have that kind of friendly blue versus red. You know, it's unusual sometimes for people to come out of the fire service and go into policing, but that's what's, what's happening here. He's been, you know, obviously, a reserve officer for us since 2012. Prior to that, he worked for the Department of Corrections, which to me, still is the hardest job in the whole law enforcement realm. You know, at least you know everyone you're dealing with is criminal, but, you know, it's, you know, it's, you're dealing with, you know, drawing that line constantly, so that's, you know, to have that experience and come out is, is very helpful to us. And he's also a member of our military. He was a member of the Air Force Security Forces, served overseas in both the South Korea and Qatar, so brings a wealth of...
Thank you for your service, all around.
It's pretty impressive. As I said earlier, also, his brother is a member of the state police, his father was a part-time member here of our department for over 10 years. He has two uncles that work for the Clinton Police Department, so it's a, it's a, you know, very common name in this region for, for law enforcement, and believe me, there's a lot of people that, I think might cringe when they hear his name. I remember some of the, I remember some of the Henry Wheeler stories that I hear, and how people, you know, were like, "Oh, Henry." I can hear some of the stories from his uncles, too, you know? And it's good, but, so, you know, it's really exciting to bring him to you and ask that you appoint him as a full-time police officer today.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Did you buy him the tie clip?
No, I did not.
That's awesome. I think that should become like industry standard. It would look nice.
Thank you. So this is the beginning of the process, the next part of the process is, because he won't be able to attend a police academy until the summer, where we'll have a letter that needs to be signed, I believe Margaret can sign it, for a waiver that will go to the Municipal Police Training Committee that'll give a 270-day waiver that'll allow him to start working right away.
Nice.
So, excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I hope I don't see him in my rearview mirror.
Maybe a coffee.
No, in my rearview mirror.
Yeah, but if you're not, you know? Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, I'll see you tomorrow.
Here is the letter to be signed by the clerk.
You're going to pose for like a photo. Mary, what are you doing?
I can do it.
Okay.
I can take you down the seal, want to go down the seal?
We can do that, yeah. Seal's always a good spot.
Oh, that's goodness. That's nice.
Okay, thank you. All right, and we are going to open a public hearing, National Grid and Verizon Joint Poll Petition. Full hearing notice is provided below, and pay...
Can I get to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
All right. Public hearing notice, Town of Berlin, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 13th, 2020, at 7:15 PM at the Berlin Town Office Building, Room 206, 23 Linden Street, Berlin, Massachusetts, to act on the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Inc., formerly known as New England Telephone and Telegraph Company, to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may find necessary in the public way or ways here and after referred to as requested in petition of said companies dated the 13th day of November 2019, and as indicated on the plan marked Randall West Road, Berlin, Massachusetts, number 24890181. The work is described as follows. Randall Road, Randall West Road, National Grid to relocate one JO pole on Randall West Road, beginning at a point approximately 1,100 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Lancaster Road, and continuing approximately 30 feet in an east direction. Relocate pole number eight from private property at customer's request, no existing easement for pole at 344 Randall West Road. The plan is online at the Selectmen's page at townofberlin.com, is available on the bulletin board outside of the town clerk's office, is posted on the town's Facebook page, and is available for viewing in the Selectmen's office. Board of Selectmen, Christine Keef, Lisa Weisaki, and Margaret Stone.
Thank you.
Come on up. Sure. Sure.
Hi, my name's Javier Morales, I'm here to represent National Grid, and as you read, we're requesting for the relocation, for a new location, grant of approval for pole eight at 344 Randall West Road. This work is to support a lineup grid for a solar field that's occurring at this location.
Okay. Is there, is there, I guess first, is there any questions from the Selectmen?
Not at all.
Okay, any, any questions, comments from the audience? All right.
Approved.
Motion to approve.
Sorry, jumping on.
I gotta think about it. Okay, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice night.
That was easy, thank you, have a good one.
We'll close the hearing. Thank you.
Be careful up there, it might be slippery.
Yeah. Do we have something we need to sign for that, or are we good?
Oh, yes, yes, there is, I'm sorry. It's right here somewhere.
Does it need that?
I think Mary...
Mary went out after.
Provides it after.
Yep. Okay.
You don't hand him any...
I just like saying what.
No, because Elise needs to do stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Why?
Is it Randall West Road?
No.
It is now.
So it's the beginning of...
It is now.
Yeah, so it's the beginning of Randall Road.
Right. It's the west end of it, I guess.
So in the future, while you're, through the chair. So in the future, while you're signing these, it might be a good idea at some point to involve the Highway Superintendent in the review of these and give his recommendation prior to taking action, because the pole locations can only happen on public ways, that's the only jurisdiction the board has, it might be worthwhile to have him look and make sure there's no interference with traffic, and then it's in a spot that's...
He can plow.
That he can plow, and things like that, so...
Do we have a checklist for that, or?
Not yet.
Not here?
Police Fire Building Inspector.
Well, typically, it's just the Highway Superintendent because of where the pole is, so...
Okay.
Is it just two spots?
I thought I signed three times.
I thought you did, too.
I was looking for three stickies, and I think there's only two.
A Verizon that says they only need one.
So there's only two?
I can give them photocopy.
I know I signed my name three times in there.
I know, I thought you did.
And there's the one with...
You did. There's one with a missing sticky.
Oh, there you go.
There's already a third copy.
I don't know how I caught that.
I don't know either. So, there's the missing sticky page.
Okay.
And do you want to, do you want to do your town administrator report while we're signing?
Sure.
Oh, no, no, no. Never mind.
It's them.
I thought, yeah, it's personnel, never mind, I'm sorry.
They're on the back leg.
Come on, come on up.
So Rog, I'm going to get you both on camera.
Oh, thank you, oh, yeah. All right, thank you.
Hello, newly found relatives. There you go.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year to you.
Okay.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
You should have received a copy of the information that we're going to present tonight. It's very minimal, it's, we had presented in November, the cost of living adjustment, the COLA increase that we recommended was 1.5%, so the wage exceptions to the 1.5% COLA is what we're presenting tonight. It is a, there's a spreadsheet, that first spreadsheet there is the position classification. That really did not change except for the former upgrades that we had made to positions earlier this year, which were for the Council on Aging Director, and the van driver, as well as the Veterans Agent. We made three adjustments earlier this year. So we included those in the position classification spreadsheet. The ones that I'd like to just bring to the board's attention are for the exceptions to the COLA, which would be above and beyond the COLA, are the, according to the agreement that was initially... The ones that I'd like to just bring to the board's attention are for the exceptions to the COLA, which would be above and beyond the COLA, are the, according to the agreement that was initially made with the town administrator, there is a January 20 increase. And so we had increased her fiscal year 21 amount to be in addition to that January 2020 increase.
Mm-hmm.
So we added that in. The next per, the next position that we looked at, we looked at all the positions this year pretty much in the carp survey. And the ones that really stood out are the ones that we're presenting here because we knew that the HR consultant was going to be coming in and taking a good look at a lot of the positions. So we didn't want to get into too much detail, but there were some that stuck, stuck out to us and we wanted to try and do what we could to bring them, bring them up to market. The first one is the town accountant. And I have include, we included in your packet as well, the market data for those positions that we are talking about. So our position is under the market data and would like to recommend an increase to that position, up to 90,000. We wanted to go that, if you look at the, for the most part, the other positions around are getting paid a lot more than that, so. And I do know that there were some, in the performance evaluation process, people did share information with us that we really appreciated to take a look at some of these things, so.
What is she presently at? Do you know?
She's currently at the 80, 81,000.
Yeah, okay.
Is this her closer, at least to the midpoint?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And also the HR consultant will look at that again. But we wanted to at least do something for the new fiscal year and get it on the, get it in the budget. The next one was the accounting clerk. The accounting clerk is currently a clerk, but we are looking at the process by which that that person is integrating themselves into a higher level position, really, because that person is working on payroll when the accountant, town accountant, is not here. So we recognize that. We did not upgrade the position per se. We did give the position a step increase and we agreed, we approved an increase in hours to 40 hours a week versus the 35 that the person is at now. So that was the increase to that position. There were some positions, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably go through the assessor's office, Molly Reed, the assistant town clerk, the library director, and I think that's it. Those, if you look over to the right on those positions, their position last year was not increased in the same amount that the, that personnel recommended to the Board of Selectmen. The board approved the increases and then somehow, some way, they were taken off. So what you see over to the right under notes is what we had recommended last year, plus the 1.5%, not what they're making right now, plus the 1.5%. So that was the exceptions on those three particular positions. I want to take one off of here because I did not have all the information that I needed for the treasurer collector position, but we do, and that will go up the 1.5%. That will not go up anymore than, because now we have the information that we needed on that position. So we can cross that position off the list. But we do need to bring to the board's attention the, all the positions that are currently at minimum wage, because those need to go up more than the 1.5% because the new minimum wage has come in. The 1294 starts in January, well, it just, January 20, sorry.
It's now. It's January 1st, 2020. Well, it's 1275 now, but with a one and a half, it's 1294.
That's right. So 12, I thought so. So it's January 2020. And then the other one, the 1350 is for January 2021. So we need to just recognize that. And there was one other.
Lieutenant Polino.
Yes. So when we were going through, the, last year, the personnel committee did not go over the fire departments. The fire chief had submitted those without us going through everything. And one of the things we noticed is that the lieutenant on the fire department was paid at a captain's rate. So what we're doing here is we're fixing it and bringing it back down to the lieutenant rate, but we're not going to take any money away. It's, it's a little bit more than a 1.5% increase, but it'll put the person back into the lieutenant's pay grade. And then once the HR consultant comes through, they can determine whether we're underpaying, overpaying, that sort of thing. So they, they'll come up with some recommendations for some of those positions. And then I did the library director. Yep. So the library director, that is due to not getting increased last year, or actually even the year before.
I think he took a cut to put money back in the library budget. He put his increase back so that the money could flow to the library.
All right.
Yep.
And the only other one was the veterans agent, and that position really needed to be upgraded. Right now, we've just moved up in, in terms of the same level as what the van driver's at, because the veterans agent is something, is a position that was kind of, I questioned on here, is it 12 hours a week? Is it 12 hours a month? But I think that's one thing that the HR will recommend, that the HR consultant take a look at as well, because if we look at our, our survey data, we're drastically underpaying people, but there have been people in other towns that have determined that they wanted to take a small stipend to do this very, very dedicated work versus taking a salary. So that may be what Jim had in mind. But in any case, we did want to increase it to at least what we had approved at Personnel Committee.
Was it difficult to find someone to compare with? For the veterans agent?
Veterans agent, we used all the towns, and it's on the second page of the, of the market data.
Because we're sharing with, correct?
Yeah, but his hourly rate would be the same even if we're sharing.
Right.
Right.
I just didn't know if that was very common.
It's all over the map. And if you, if you look at the market data, it, some people, again, they get a small stipend, others get a salary. Some, some towns have a 40-hour person, other people don't, like ourselves, who just have somebody who comes in a few hours a week. So those were the recommendations we want to make at this time.
Okay. Where was the assessor one? On your sheets? I couldn't find it.
I did not include the assessor one, because she was not, that, that position was not a position that we were recommending an upgrade to. We're just recommended that, recommending that her salary that we recommended last year, that 1.5% be added to that, because for whatever reason, she did not put in the budget for the, or finance may have brought it down also.
Right.
So we're just recommending that the rate that we approved last year have the 1.5% added to it, because that really keeps her in the ballpark in terms of the compensation.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Questions?
Questions.
No, you guys did an amazing job. Thank you.
Yeah, you did.
Thanks.
Questions, Peg?
I'm good.
You don't have any questions?
You better hurry up and go, because you know that the more I look through this paper, I will find something for you.
Do you like a vote or?
I know. If I have the, I'll find you a vote.
Yeah, if, if you're ready to do that, yeah, that'd be great.
I'm motion to support the recommendations.
Wait here a second. I'll second it.
I'll second.
All right. Make him sweat, Peg.
Little bit.
Make him sweat.
Make him sweat.
All right. Well, the second then, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Well done, ladies.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. See you Wednesday night.
See you this weekend.
Right.
Yes. You can go with the camera.
Okay.
Now, I'll ask Margaret if she wants to do a town administrator report.
Claire, like, what?
She wants to leave.
What's on Claire that you need to get home?
No, nothing. Just picked up my mom's and get her stuff done.
Oh.
I'll just pull off a few things from the report, as I normally do, and I have an additional verbal report. Under HR benefits, I am looking to post the job ad for the 1870 Town Hall Manager as soon as Thursday, with a closing date on the ad of January 26th. I'm going to bring the ad to the Personnel Committee on Wednesday night for approval. We need to, for, for several reasons, including a rush on reservations at the Town Hall, we need to get that position filled, in fairness to Leah. The HR consultant will be doing kickoff orientation sessions for employees on Wednesday, February 12th, two identical sessions, just different times in the day to accommodate work schedules. I'm going to be working with Finance Committee this Wednesday to develop a department budget meeting schedule. There hadn't been anything really kind of set in stone for the upcoming meetings. And in fairness to the Finance Committee and the departments that'll be coming, they'll, they'll know when their appointments are. We have a meeting early tomorrow morning at DEP in Worcester. It's a pre-application assistance meeting regarding the library septic. So hopefully after tomorrow, we'll have a better sense of the path we should take on the, on the septic replacement and what might, or what might not happen with a, a well, relocating the well.
You repeat that. Yeah, really. Could you have that again? Will you be bringing anybody from the library?
Yes. The Chair of the Trustees and the Library Director are going. Chris is going, I'm going, the Chair, the Board of Health is going, the Health Agent is going, and Evan Carloni, our volunteer design engineer, is going to go, too. So the whole group will, our, our little working group will go. All right, now, this is a little different, but the town clerk has asked that I announce some things on her behalf. First of all, every home in the United States will have received a 2020 census by April 1st of this year. So these census, the census responses can be completed online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone living in the U.S. is required by law to participate, and this will help the town and Massachusetts get their fair share of federal funds and political representation for the next 10 years. For those who do not respond in a timely manner, census workers will begin visiting homes in May of 2020, if residents haven't responded to the census. The town clerk asks that residents sign and send back their town census forms, their street listing forms. She also wants to announce that the presidential primary is going to be held on March 3rd, 2020, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. There will be early voting the week of February 24th through 28th. I believe that's here in this building. On Monday and Friday, the hours will be noon to 1:30, as well as normal working hours, Tuesday, Thursday, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Wednesday evening, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And finally, dog licenses are available now, and dog owners are required to present a current rabies vaccination certificate. She notes that the fee can be returned with the census and tags can be mailed out. Oh, they'll actually be available during the presidential primary election, so someone's going to be able to issue dog tags during that, during that election. That's going to be a busy day. And she doesn't know yet what date the Nishova Rabies Clinic will be held. I'm working this week on finalizing a nomination submission packet for Brownfield's assessments on the Tolman property on Walnut Street. It's probably going to be a pretty thick packet, but I have, I have also learned that the, this, this matter has been referred by DEP to the EPA. And it's not the same exact matter. The EPA's, I don't know what they call it, it's a, it's their cleanup task force. They address risks, imminent risks to public health and safety. So they, if EPA is to go on the property, and they say that they're going to be eventually, they would be doing immediate cleanup work. Our packet's going to include more comprehensive work, you know, such as cleaning asbestos and, and taking care of the, the broader issue. So I'm hoping that we can work in tandem and get on that property and get, get some things done. I think we do have, I, I am going to be attending in the Shova Valley Regional Dispatch District Administrative Board meeting on January 22nd for some important budget updates from the district, so I will, I will keep the board posted after that. And finally, two things. We have a, an energy consultant coming in to do a no-cost walkthrough of this building and the highway barn to see whether there are any potential energy savings opportunities. And then the last thing we, I have is the cybersecurity training program that the, the town received, I don't know, we received an award in its participation in this, in this training program. We have provided the state a CSV file of all Town of Berlin email addresses. CM Geeks, our IT contractor, has changed settings to allow for training and testing and assessments to come to various emails, and some of these might be kind of surprise emails, so watch your emails very carefully, because you could be getting some emails that could be tricky. So that's going to be, I think we have content rolling out actually this week on the program, so that this week is going to be the start.
Okay.
Actually, there's been a minor delay, but we're starting. And that's it for now.
So Margaret, quick question. On the building energy consultant for the town barn.
Yeah.
I know that there was some discussion, June had mentioned, that she's working with Dave on a possible, like, excess oil building, burning opportunity.
Oh, the waste oil?
Yeah. I mean, will that be, will that be part of it? I mean, can it be rolled into it, or is that something different?
We can certainly ask about those opportunities, about solar, about geothermal, about any other options, maybe pellet burners, or, we can ask to see what we could possibly do here that would, that would help.
Our small cost. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. We'll see.
We would look very closely if, if we're thinking about the excess oil, because there are, there are issues with that one.
There are issues with waste oil?
Yeah.
Air, is it?
There are all kinds of different sorts of issues. It's just something we should look at closely before we make a decision, like, in that.
All right. We'll look at all options and then determine what's feasible and what's not.
Yeah.
All right. All right. And we're.
Did you want to address anything on the fiscal year 2021 budget?
Yes. I do not have updates this evening for the board, and that is, not updates, I'm sorry, recommendations on budget requests, and that is intentional, and it's for a few reasons. First of all, I want to be sure that any recommendations I make to the board, I am comfortable making, and I want, and by that, I mean, I need to have all of the background information to serve as the basis for my recommendation, and I don't feel I have that on some of the budget requests. So for that reason, that's one of the reasons I'm not going to make recommendations tonight. I do anticipate resuming recommendations at your next meeting. I've also started to receive, right after the board did its approvals on budget requests at your last meeting, I started receiving a few budget revisions or corrections. And so this is, it required me to develop four new columns on the budget spreadsheet so that we can kind of track those revisions as we move along. And so I focused my attention on doing that rather than on recommendations this week. I want to be sure that we have a good template that we're working with.
Okay.
That's where we're at. No changes on revenues since your last meeting.
Okay. Possible topic, topics for coffee talk. We're having coffee talk on February 13th at the 1870 Town Hall. I know we had talked about having the director at the Devon's Dispatch. I know we had talked about having the Director at the Devon's Dispatch come so that he can explain to people who may not understand exactly how things work when you have an There were a lot of questions, I know, when this all began, and I'm just making sure, I'm thinking that this might be one way to make sure that people understand how things work.
That's probably a significant period of time with him, I guess.
Could be.
Talk about the happenings at the Dispatch District?
Well, I think it's more process. I think people were having difficulty understanding because we always had somebody down in the building.
Yeah.
And I think there's still maybe a disconnect as to how everything works together, so you may have, have questions.
A lot of questions.
Can he provide any type of overview, which I think we could either hand out or post, you know, so that questions? Yeah, I mean, so that people can start to think of questions, or maybe if he hands a flow, somebody will be like, oh, okay, yeah, that's, yeah, all right, okay, I'm good.
I don't know. Do you, do you want to ask him?
Yeah, I would think that he'd be able to put something together just to kind of give a broad overview of how it works.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you'll see him, was it the 20th? Oh, the 22nd, okay.
The 22nd, yeah.
Either that or just send him an email.
I mean, a graphical flow chart would be really, really nice, I think, rather than a lot of words.
Yeah. All right. And should we leave a half an hour or an hour for that?
I'd do 30 minutes, and then if there's a need, we can, we can follow up.
And do we want to have possibly our new Fire Chief?
Absolutely.
Intention?
And probably Tom to come back and give any type of traffic update, because that seemed to be a pretty hot topic last time we had this.
I would almost leave out at least another half an hour for question and answer with the new Fire Chief, too, though.
Yeah.
So maybe an hour for public safety in total?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And then Margaret, you and I had talked about getting town input on what they want to see with the 1870 house, maybe opportunities where you could do a movie night on a Friday night in conjunction with pizza night across the street so that it benefits both, and maybe something's going on with the library, that we could start to pull in all the opportunities in the center of town and start to direct them towards one.
So a community conversation on use of the 1870?
Mm-hmm.
And then did we want to invite different groups to come?
Yeah.
The Town Hall Advisory Committee, if they're available?
Okay.
The Recreation Council on Aging, I don't know if there's any others?
Do you think that we'll have a COA Director in place by then?
Not a COA Director, no. But they have two co-chairs that, and members that might be interested in coming.
So Rec, COA, who else?
The, well, we've dissolved the group, but the Town Hall Advisory Committee members.
Okay.
And maybe representatives from the other buildings in that area, maybe the church, the library, 19 Carter, in order to, you know, talk about.
Historical.
And historical, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Good point. All right.
So a question on that, since we'll have it at the Town Hall. I'm assuming that we'll need to get in there early to set up chairs. Is there a microphone, anything like that that we need to do?
I'll look into that.
Okay.
I think Leanne can tell you.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
I know there's audio equipment in the closet there, but.
I think, I'm pretty sure they do. They, when they had the grand opening and people did some little quick speeches.
Okay.
They, Evy spoke on, with a microphone.
Okay.
All right. That should cover it, don't you think?
I do. What I'll start to do is that I'll get this out on Berlin Neighbors Connect and Berlin Residents United, and I'll talk to the Lions Club about putting it on the white sign in the center of town, and I'll ask Dave, as we get closer, to pop it up on the blinky sign as you come up the street by the golf range and get it out there to make sure that we have, have it there. Can it run, can it run on cable, Berlin Cable? Can we put a note out there? I don't know how many people watch Berlin Cable, but can we?
Yes.
So whom would I need to? Brittany? Okay.
It used to be down the police office, downstairs, didn't it? Oh, okay, but it's Brittany now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. B.
Just email Brittany.
Okay.
All right. Should we move on? Okay. We have 2020 license renewal of Subway at Highland Commons, the Common Vic Schiller's license.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to new business, the Town Administrator's six-month priority and objective progress determination.
You have to determine if I've made satisfactory progress on six-month goals and objectives. So before you is the request that was submitted to the board at your August 19th meeting, and you voted to approve this list, so it hopefully provides some idea of what I am supposed to be, I've been working on and was supposed to have been working on, and there's a lot more than on this list. Things pop up.
Oh, I know.
A lot.
I know.
So.
Do you, how do you feel about the list? And how do you?
I'm actually, I look at it and I say, that's not bad. That's really not bad. I mean, there are a few things that are ongoing, like the Solar Pilot Agreement, the marijuana HCA negotiations, but, you know, we've had, we've had a string of vacancies that needed to be filled, and now we have yet another new one, so that's been largely accomplished. We've even had the representative from the, from the state come in and talk about OSHA requirements. We've done, you know, I've helped the Capital Planning Committee update their capital request forms. We have not sent letters to businesses regarding the plastic bag ban yet, and that's largely because we don't have an effective bylaw, which we're still trying to sort through at the, at the legislature. But other than that, I think we've, we've done a lot. We've implemented CPA.
Did you manage to do, review and update the job descriptions of most everyone, or?
We did some. We've done some, but the HR Consultant's actually going to be coming in and doing more of that, so we have contracted with the HR Consultant.
Yes.
We've, in addition to these things, I mean, the board has adopted about 20 policies and procedures in this, in this short time, so you've done a lot as far as creating a framework for your actions.
Is there a central location for those yet?
I have, I have a binder, but I think we're looking at doing a Google Drive and putting them all in a Google Drive.
Okay.
I mean, there's very few on this list that aren't complete.
I think Margaret's come above and beyond for the short time that she's been here.
I do, too. I do, too. And let's see where my paper is here.
There's actually, there's six policies up on your website now.
Oh, there are six already?
Yeah.
Oh, good, okay. So we'll build on that.
So I don't know if I want to read this. There is some, in her, in her contract, she will have her, if we decide, she's done well on her goals, she will have an increase as of January 20th. Is that what Personnel said?
I think it's the 15th, or that's January 2020. I think it's the 15th. It's a six-month? Okay. I think it's on or about, it says, right.
Okay. So how do we, do we want to make a motion, or?
Motion to agree that Margaret has met and exceeded the requirements that have been set for us.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right.
We can work on a, we can work on a new list for the next six months.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you.
Well, let's see how much we can accomplish in the next six.
I mean, so Margaret, in the past, honestly, in the past six months, I mean, I hear nothing but accolades wherever I wander in town, you know, about you and how lucky we are to have found you and for you to have found us. So do you feel that there's anything that you're getting stuck on that we, the board, can help you on, or, I mean, I want to make sure, and as I've said all along, I don't want to make you our dumping ground for everything of, oh, give it to Margaret, give it to Margaret. I don't want that. So, I mean, now that you've kind of gotten a chance to know the folks of the town and how the town operates, and, you know, the nuances that the town will bring, is there anything that we can do to help you continue to be successful and move Berlin forward?
I have felt very supported by the board and by Mary. What I would like to see, and this, the HR Consultant will come into play here, is I would like to see if, if Mary's position could actually also be able to assist me, you know, specifically along with the board, and that way, you know, we could work more closely together and have greater communication and be able to really get the wheels in motion. I mean, it's hard enough being across the hall, but, you know, to not really be aligned as far as the day-to-day administrative stuff, that would be, I think that would be really useful for me. Other than that, I mean, we just keep, we just keep plugging away. You know, we have to understand, I have to understand, that, you know, sometimes things take years, you know, to get to a certain point. Things aren't going to always be resolved or fixed or change course overnight. So it's just, it's a constant, you know, it's just a continuing process to keep things moving in the right direction, so.
And we've, I mean, this is our first Town Administrator. Had we had one before, it might have been a little easier when you came in.
Yes, it's really.
It's more a lot harder depending upon who it was.
It's really all about setting, you know, setting procedures and processes in place and getting people to kind of buy into the central administrative function, and so from my perspective, I think, you know, we've had plenty of bumps, but I think that we're just, we're moving in the right direction. That's the way I feel.
Yes, absolutely. All right. Well, we had a motion and a second. Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, let us know when you're ready to, if you'd like to go over maybe goals.
Sure, I've already started a new list.
I was going to say, didn't we give you, like, a list that turned into, like, 15 pages and you were picking through?
We can pull that out and see where that's at.
You might have already accomplished a few of those.
Really, put them down as goals, Margaret, just like cross them off. Done.
That's a feel-good thing.
The fact that what you're looking at now is slightly different from what you looked at when you came in, though, as you figure out the town and the priorities.
Right, right. It is, yeah, it's, it's going to look a little different now, but it'll be good to keep, keep an eye on specific priorities and objectives.
Mm-hmm. Great. All right. A list of potential 2020 annual Town Meeting articles.
So through the chair, I've, I've been plugging in certain possible, and again, I emphasize possible, Town Meeting articles. So as I hear things, as I hear ideas or needs, I just plug in little placeholders. That does not mean that they are, you know, that I'm going to be recommending them for the warrant, but it does mean that they've gotten, they've been put on my radar anyway to add to a list.
Okay.
Just.
Are there any that you want to talk about?
Well, yeah, well, I guess a couple, I guess a couple of them. First of all, we've talked before about this, about replenishing the reserve fund for this year. I know that it's not necessary. The Finance Committee just last week did a supplemental reserve fund transfer to support, oh, gosh, to support what? It's the building, okay? The part-time building inspector, yeah, inspections, wages. And so these, you know, these ideas of replenishing the reserve fund, yes, they don't, it doesn't have to happen at Town Meeting, the board doesn't have to put these on a warrant, but the Animal Control Officer and the Building Inspection's part-time wages happen to be lined where there is another funding source to be able to replenish the reserve fund, and that's why, that's why I've included them here. There is a vote that was taken under Article 20 of the May 6th Annual Town Meeting that had a sunset clause with, on the tanker pumper truck. The sunset clause was money must be expended by June 30th, 2020. That certainly is not going to happen, so I think that we need to request that that be amended to June 30th, 2021. There are a couple of other little things here, but jumping down to annual Town Meeting and special articles, we know that River Bridge Buildings, residential buildings, are going to start being occupied this spring, so I think this spring is the time to start thinking about traffic mitigation measures that we, as a town, can take, not just through River Bridge mitigation, but things that we can do on our own. So I've added here, I've just plugged in ideas for the movable solar-powered LED speed signs. Those are easily put up and removed and can be put around town to remind drivers of their, of their speed. These are the signs we tried to get in the, the Signs and Lines grant application that we were unsuccessful with. And then there might be a need for other road signs related to traffic mitigation. And finally, I have asked, I've asked the Highway Superintendent to look at what it would cost and what's required in repairing the Linden and Central Streets intersection traffic, the traffic light there, to see if that can actually be put back into working order.
You mean the flashing yellow?
The flashing, yeah, right now, it's a traffic light right at the intersection. It just flashes red or yellow, depending.
I would assume that the traffic study would probably tell you you need to put in the regular light.
Probably, yeah. So we need now to look at fixing it. So we're gonna, I'd possibly be looking at recommending to the board an appropriation to have that repaired. Then there's been the discussion about bucket truck versus contracted tree removal. My thought in this particular list is that the town may decide it's worthwhile funding a contracted service for a period of time to take care of the highest priority trees, maybe give us a little more time to work with another surrounding town on a joint bucket truck purchase, and give the Highway Department time to prepare to operate their own bucket truck and get trained accordingly. So right now, my list includes a contract. truck and get trained accordingly. So, right now, my list includes a contracted tree removal service for X number of days, and I don't know how many trees that would encompass. That's something we'd have to look at. I understand the board had, had request, had put on a special article last year for Grant Match to provide for Grant Match funds where grants require that. I think that's a great idea, and it would be nice to include that again. I've talked a lot about infrastructure project design engineering. The capital planning committee might be hesitant to include that as, include that for programmatic funding at this point because we don't know for sure that we're going to get a grant. But if we don't put at least a small amount of money into design engineering, we're not going to find out if we can get a grant because we won't be able to.
Because you have to do it so quickly?
Well, yes. This one, if we, if we were to appropriate the money in the spring, it would give us, I think it would give us the year unless a new grant round opens up in the fall. It would give us a year to have the design engineering done, say, on a small project, and then it would give us time to apply for the grant the following spring. Everything would be in order.
And one of the questions that's typically on those grants is whether you have something in your capital plan to address.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Whatever you're, you're asking for the grant for.
Right. The next thing on the backside of that sheet, the taxing and regulating short-term rentals, this is something that we have to talk about a little more. This is for, this is the so-called Airbnb tax. This is for very short-term rentals. This isn't, it is kind of tied indirectly to the rooms tax, but this is specifically for short-term rentals. And I know that there are different opinions on this. Berlin isn't really a tourist area like the Cape might be, and so, there might be different implications. And I don't think Berlin stands to gain a lot of money on this type of tax. But what it does do is it does require that the money be used for affordable housing or local infrastructure projects. So, when we talk about possible programmatic funding for design engineering for infrastructure, this could be, be a potential use for that money. The EDC, Economic Development Committee has asked to, that the planning board be the only appointing authority for the Economic Development Committee, and that the Economic Development Committee membership change from five to a smaller number at the discretion, or whatever number at the discretion of the planning board. So, I added that when I, when I heard that request.
Does the planning board know about this?
I didn't receive the request from the planning board. I'm going to have to share it with them.
Might have to talk to the planning board first.
Now, the town adopted the Scenic Roads Act years ago, and there is a requirement in the Scenic Roads Act, this is very interesting, there's a requirement in the Scenic Roads Act that requires planning board hearing, hearings when a tree is removed or a stone wall is disturbed, and that even includes for small residential projects too. And so, the board, while the planning board has to have a hearing under the Scenic Roads Act, this board, and you've now kind of conferred the designation of authorized signatory on driveway permits and road opening permits, but this board addresses driveway permits and road opening permits, and there's no hearing process on this side. So, a member of the planning board came to me and said that the planning board would like to take a look at the Scenic Roads Act to see how it's going to work best for Berlin so that all the different permitting authorities can work in conjunction. So, that's an idea here. The next one is earthworks board bylaw amendments. At the, so, this could be, it could be a few different things. The town could potentially vote to amend the public body authorized to issue permits, maybe put it in the hands of a public body with expertise in the area of soils, soil importing, land use, or, and/or, two bylaws, the earthwork board bylaw and the like-kind soil bylaws could potentially be combined to make one more comprehensive bylaw. Personnel bylaw updates, this has been discussed by the personnel committee, and when the, when the HR consultant comes in, there'll probably be more discussion. Right now, we have, part of the personnel bylaw actually gets into the specifics about years of service and vacation time. That's definitely a policy item, and a bylaw should point to that. So, it's possible that we might want to look at taking those kinds of specifics out of the bylaw and having them revert to policy. So, it makes it easier, it makes it easier to change. The next one, I, the next one, I just don't, I don't see that came up during the discussion one time. And finally, the one that I didn't include on this list, but I would, I would like included, is the ability for the town to enforce parking regulations. So, with, no, we do have some no parking signs around town, but unfortunately, not unfortunately, but it just so happens that the town has not adopted Chapter 90, Section 20A, which allows ticketing, which allows hearings before a parking clerk. So, that's something that we would have to adopt in order to put that in place. So, what I would envision with this is a bylaw that would, that includes the chapter acceptance, and then probably listing fines or the mechanism to, to appeal parking tickets and things. So, I think it might be, might be time for that with River Bridge coming aboard. We have a number of establishments operating all around town, and why not look at a formal process?
So, I have one, I think you skipped over, but authorize the select board to enter into contracts greater than three years?
Yeah.
Or a plus standard consent articles?
And, and, and the other standard consent articles. So, this one is typically a consent article on town meeting warrants. It's just kind of your standard administrative-type article. But I don't think Berlin has had it on, so I would, I would look at possibly adding that. I don't think the Municipal Modernization Act took that requirement away. So, I would look at doing that just to give the board some, some flexibility with entering.
Are you talking about?
Pilot agreements?
Okay.
You know, long-term agreements, long-term service agreements.
I didn't know if you were talking about contracts for people.
No, not necessarily. No, these would be.
Because I don't think you can.
Yeah. No, these would be big, these would be big, multi-year agreements.
Okay, that explains it. That was my question.
There's another one here that, you know, I, I have to say, I've, I've read now the, the bylaws on town meeting, town reports. It's a, it's kind of a blend of, of bylaws in one section of the bylaw. It'd be nice to try to clean that up somehow and maybe modify some of the requirements under there. I can't be, I don't have specifics right now, but I spent some time reading it again this week, and I thought, wow, it's just about, it's about, it's like there's everything in there. And so, it'd be nice to maybe figure out how to clean that up a little.
Okay. All right.
So, I have a question. I know that last year, and Margaret, I don't know if you were there that night, where we had talked about possibly splitting out the town report versus, you know, these articles that go out to folks. And I know one of the big concerns with the people in town is that they get the joint town report and these articles 48 hours before the meeting, so it doesn't really give them time to look through, come prepared with questions. So, I don't think that went anywhere last year.
No, I think they were going to read and look at it.
I think the presentation was an issue also.
Agreed.
I think that we would need to present it.
So, what can we do to ensure that we're not up, like till like five of five, getting the stuff to bury, to get over to the printer, to get out?
I'm going to share my outside perspective at this moment because I, I haven't really, I haven't really gotten into the weeds about how, how it works. I haven't been there yet. But my thought is, for people, first of all, the bylaw requires that the board arrange for the town reports to be delivered to residents. It doesn't say when. It doesn't say when. It says the town report shall be, the board shall arrange, or however it says it, for the town reports to be delivered. But it also says, the board shall arrange for the town warrants to be mailed or delivered. It doesn't, it doesn't necess, it's, this is what I mean by all the different little pieces. So, first of all, I, I do think that we have to start rethinking about the way we, we do town reports. They're, they are expensive. I'm sure they're, you know, they're valuable for people to have as, as reference books. The question is, can they be made available other than by mailing to every voting household? You know, can they be made available by distributing at different areas through town or bringing a bunch to town meeting? The warrants, on the other hand, the warrants, I have, I've done it different ways. I think the requirement for the mailing of the warrant is far more important, or the requirement to deliver the warrant, however it's delivered, I think is far more important. People need to know what they are going to be voting on, and then they can look, you know, at other resources to find out more information on each of these items. So, I, that's a very, very long answer. I, I need to look more at it, but I think that's what I was getting at when I said that section of the bylaw is just kind of.
Mumbled.
It's, it's a lot. There's a lot, a lot there. So.
Because I know it's come up, I think at our first coffee talk or second coffee talk, that specific question came up about when can we get this information prior to the town meeting? And, you know, as Lisa said, there was a presentation that didn't go that well, a little discussion back and forth with a few people, but then there was never, like, it just died.
Yeah. What was the, what was this, if you could, I mean, what was the sentiment at town meeting? I mean, did people kind of understand?
It was on both, both ends of the spectrum.
Yeah. I think it was just, the whole thing was muddled and confused because the board had a different idea than certain members of finance, and then finance gave the presentation, and it did not agree with what was on the warrant, and it was just, the whole thing was a mess. So.
But I think there's people at both ends of the spectrum that don't want the paper.
Right.
And there's the people who want one of those books every year.
To write down comments and questions, and it's just how to get it out.
And they enjoy, enjoy reading the book.
To them ahead of time.
Yeah. What we've done this year, well, what I've tried to do this year in the budget calendar is I've tried to bump up the timeline for the reports to be distributed by like 10 days.
Yeah.
We're going to try to stick, we're going to try to stick to that, give a little bit of a buffer.
Yes.
Give a little bit of a buffer anyway. So, that's one thing. The other is, is really looking longer term at how to most effectively get this information out to.
And, and seriously, we are one of the only towns left who delivers it to the door. Most towns, they do a small batch run, if any, that is available at the town offices. Even the warrants, a lot of times, they will send a postcard saying the warrant is available at these locations, or it's available at this location online. So, really, Berlin is one of the only ones who is still paying.
Lots of money.
Lots of money to do this and going through this excruciating process to try to meet the deadlines. And also, a town report, if you look at most town reports too, that is for the previous year. So, why are we putting this year's budget and this year's warrant into last year's town report? It doesn't really make sense. So, there are a lot of things there.
I understand the, I understand the argument regarding archiving the book, but if it means, you know, if it means a last-minute rush where people don't have the time to look at it anyway, you know, we can put it on archival paper and archive things that way too. So, there are a lot, I think there are a lot of things we need to look at.
You probably have to have a group of people come in and talk to you about it, or tell people that.
A brainstorming session.
A brainstorming session.
Right, right.
But whatever's done, it has to be presented clearly, what the objectives are and where we're trying and why, where we're trying to get it, and it wasn't. So.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, moving on to the Board of Selectmen Town Meeting Action Calendar Draft. And I thought it seemed very aggressive, and I think that's fine. That's good. Good luck.
What makes this a little difficult, as far as the, the annual town meeting warrant, is the late deadline for the, for the school districts to, to submit their, their budgets. But hopefully, they will submit them a little earlier.
My understanding was they were going to try very hard to do that. I did talk to one of the school committee members, and they were, they were working very hard to get it in earlier than they have in the past.
Okay. So, there's no reason that we can't buy, okay, so the planning, the capital planning committee is going to come to the board's meeting on the 27th to present the recommended FY21 capital items and present the capital improvement plan. And I'll be doing that along, along with the capital planning committee. So, I don't see any reason why the board can't start reviewing at least the standard annual town meeting warrant articles on February 3rd, and we can just take it from there. And this is, you know, this is, this is good because the board meets weekly. You're going to be able to kind of keep up a, you know, an ongoing, ongoing review process. My question is, have you done motion handouts for town meeting in the past? Okay, so you have done motion handouts. Okay. And has the board made recommendations on the motions themselves on the, on the handout? Have you put your recommendations?
Finance committee does. The board has not.
Oh, recommendations, okay. Gotcha.
So, I guess I would just ask, you know, the, the board, think about the possibility of adding its recommendations to the motion sheet, only because when a town, when a person sitting at town meeting sees the recommendations by both bodies, especially if they're aligned, you know, it gives, I think it gives more backing to the fact that both bodies have reviewed, have reviewed this motion and understand what it is and, and support it. So, something we can talk about when that time comes.
And we also ask for a summary too, because sometimes you can read and read and drone and drone and have no idea what's being asked for when a simple summary of.
Couple sentences.
Two sentences will clear it up.
And you include that on the warrant itself, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's made a huge difference.
Yep, that's good.
There's also been a, a meeting, what, a week or two beforehand to go over the motions.
Okay.
Or go over the articles.
The pre-town meeting meeting.
Go over the articles, so that people have a sense of where things are coming from and can ask questions if they want to, and that's taped and put up.
That's good. Okay.
So, that's, that's.
I actually watched that last year's. Yes, that's a good thing.
You can come be proud of it this year. Eloise calls it a sport.
It's a sport?
Well, it's.
It's a sporting event?
Her words are, it's a blood sport.
Oh, jeez.
But, I don't know, not so much anymore.
All right. So, let me know if you have any questions on this draft calendar. It's just something to help, you know, help guide the review.
This would be great. I wish, you know, hope we can stick to this kind of thing.
Well, and that's just it. I mean, how much are we going to adhere to it? Because I know in the past, it's been, oh, you can get it to us Friday at 1:00. Oh, it's Friday at 4:00.
Sure.
I think, I think you have, also, you have, you have somebody to follow up on this stuff now, and in the past, we have not. So, I think that will be very helpful, because if it's not there, then I'm assuming Margaret's going to say, where is it?
Well, and you have multiple dates to do, you know, you have multiple dates on which you're going to be doing these things, so it's not just confined to one, one day, except for the signing of the warrant.
All right. Well, thanks for putting that together.
You're welcome.
And now, we'll move on to the earthworks board summary and the checklist draft.
So, this is the summary that was presented, in markup form. This is the summary that was presented to the board, or in front of the board last week in draft form, just for a reference document. And this is exactly what this would be. It's kind of a synopsis of the entire bylaw, the application process that's prescribed in the bylaw, and it adds the administrative duties here, so the things that we have to follow up on here in order to get to a hearing, and for the board to make a decision after the hearing. This is just being introduced tonight. Yep, this is just being introduced. This is just being introduced tonight, yep, this is just being introduced tonight for the first time. So you're welcome to review it and send me comments by Wednesday.
Board questions and comments.
See you smiling. You can look at... I'll keep it quick. This was just something, it was in the, the Unlimited Action Newspaper for Stowe, Hudson, Bolton, Berlin. And it's something that I know that we've talked about. Concord is offering office space, which is something that we were looking at, you know, if there are opportunities in town to rent or provide office space that they get for as little as $450 a month or $25 a day. You can work on a high-speed internet, get all your work done with, it's 24/7 access. You know, it's, it's just something that I thought was pretty cool for Concord to do, and I would love to see if Berlin could do it as well. It brings in business. It gives small businesses in town. It drives people to Berlin. It puts us in here, you know, that we're doing this, too. I know that, you know, that we had a committee that was looking at space. I'm not quite sure whatever happened to it, but would love to see if this is a possibility with any of the buildings that we have, whether here, 1870, you know, or other buildings in town to do something like that, but thought that was kind of cool that Concord offers a office space for the time you need. And then, see, you love, you love local newspapers. In the community advocate for Shrewsbury, Westboro, Northboro, Southboro, Marlboro, Hudson, and Grafton, the, there was an article about, kind of like a historical, people working with the Historical Committee in town, that the, there was a gentleman who owned a Art and Frame Emporium. And what he did is that he gave of his time, that he worked with the Historical Committee, and so as they found items, they gave them to the police department to put up. They gave them to the fire department to put up. So I don't know what the Historical Committee has down in one of its rooms, but thinking if there was something that we could do, come up with a plan to try and do that, you know...
Like display?
Yes, put the history of Berlin up where it needs to be, you know, for around, for people to look at. So I just thought that was a, a cool article that, the little town of Westboro, right next door, that that's what they were doing it. Over, it just says, "Over the past years, the gentleman, Ed Turner, has found a way to merge his business experience with his love of Westboro history in a way that honors the past and is a gift to future residents." So I don't know what we can do, you know, I suppose this is a Mr. Egger type of...
Historical committee.
Historical committee, you know, type to do, but if other towns are doing it, why can't we?
I think you should talk to them.
Okay. All right, I'll send this to them. Maybe I can invite the Personnel Committee to come along. Okay.
Are there any other, you have any questions? I think mine got answered during the meeting. All right, so do we have, do we still have need for the executive session?
I think we should, yeah.
All right, then I'll ask the board to go into executive session, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, strategy for non-union contract employee that firing EMS chief, and to vote or approve executive session reading minutes, and only to return to open session to adjourn.
Where's Haki Eye?
Keep eye.
Stone Eye. Thanks, Mr. V.